Good evening, everyone. My name is David McBride, Councilor Chair of the Public Safety Committee. I'll kick this meeting over. I'm bringing to. Present along with him is Councilor Franco and Town Manager Bert. And for the sake of ensuring the other two other participants. So we might just. But from that field.
I'm Ron Huma, President of the Quantic Bridge Fire District.
Emetheus Chief Ole Miss Acquired Department.
We're just going to.
McHale. It's great. Next order of business is communications. We can only receive is several emails. That expectation. The other committee members, Councilor. Who admits of May 23rd, Special Agent. Do you or not?
Make a motion.
Have a second motion. Discussion of minutes. All in favor of the motion. Minutes. For 23rd meeting. Okay, next order of business is fire district funding. So this is where we'll get to the meat of the conversation. And we all received various pieces of information. I'm sure you've received it. Sent it out. And I'm just going to kind of introduce some topics.
If you don't have a compiled spreadsheet there or something. I've got the special one.
Yeah.
Perfect really hard copy.
Right? So we look at.
Yeah. All the spreadsheets are in there too. Those are where they were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, there's a yellow, one of the yellow stripes.
I see them all covered all up. At one page 11, we're. We have third piece of. Yeah.
Okay. I'm using a common copy.
There you go. To the next guy.
We have, so I think I just want to mention on page 11, which is I guess. Quickly reviewing that, I think this is really two or three main things. Many things. How the total revenue sharing pilot piece. Out of the city, the town. If you look here. What this analysis shows is that if you look kind of in the middle section, total state revenue sharing in 23, 1.712. Total revenue sharing 24, 1.506. That's a total. Pilot funding that we the town receive. And if you look. Below that, you're going to see the total revenue loss. Brighton, out of Brighton loses 29 million. That is footing from the top left, town of Brighton number 20. Just to put everything in perspective.
And that's all categories, federal, everything, everything. And it's really predicated on Mary Gardner and the Sussler put the blue one together. So this information is very much predicated using.
We don't know anything. What I'm trying to do is just, you know, high level 30,000. Count is out. 29 million. Taxes at the park.
Now that's. Not just state back.
Yes, and I guess as comments were federal. State or penis to a church. And that's in the background of page 10. So that totals 31, the total of two of them together. Sorry, the next is 2914, the all total of the fire districts. Including the cities 2.772, so the total is 30, it's not added there, 31.92. You take that 31.92 and you add the city to it, which again is the top left row. 48,000. Go with the new total of 32 million 393,000. Both taxes and revenue. County securities.
And the city is. City fires included in the higher numbers. It is a city fire area. City ride. So the we will see city around it needs.
Okay, so it's all. All right, so just to clarify, so then the total total is 31. Total of the two. One of the 2.7. The total revenue taxes and losses. Our districts. And the reason I'm pointing that out is because the council needs to make determination of what number they want to present to the city. What number they want to present to the fire districts. And I just want to make sure. That we're all on the same page that the revenue loss for the county of Brighton. 29.1 is 89%. I'm sorry, 91% of the total revenue loss from the fire district. So just pilot level of the town is losing their share. You made that determination. That's kind of what we. First item is how are we going to make the split between this 1.5 million? Eric.
I think though, since we're like talking, I think the intent was focus on the state revenue though. The middle category is probably the one. I think that's what they were. Probably just certainly state pilot.
Okay, so we're just focusing on. Okay. Or if he's in that same. Philosophy, then it would be 4.8 compared to 1, 1, 2, roughly 1, 3. Change the math. Probably 4.8 million. Eight. The town had two. Oh, 1, 3. Right, so 1, 3. Fire district. Towns.
Which is offset by the this year that was. Though some was given, some of it was allocated to the. Alright, so a little less than that.
17 for fiscal 23. But for next year, 10. Okay, so that, so that's just the first thing. Second, so once we determine. Also what percentage we want to give out that 1.5 to our districts. Second is, once we deem the amount, then it's. Page 10. I think this. Here, how do we determine what's the appropriate distribution? Once we determine how to break it up between all fire districts. Now, many ways to do that, I think, this like. This is talking over here, this is the history of what the town is. Need appropriate for the districts and it's ranged from 50 to 43 to 60. 60, 50%. So all the different. You know, this page.
No. So we get, we get state money and then a bunch goes to our. We're currently at like 16%. Branch of state and. And it has been as high as 61%.
Alright, so that's back to. If you just say in the core state. Town is 4.8, for us, the fires is 1.2, so. I. 7%. Oh. Yes, it's 1.2 or 6. Yeah. Yeah, you're about 20%. And that's what's in this next year's budget. But the first stage is to determine what percentage is part of that's where it is. It's all been different. I'm not sure if you want to discuss more details on that. I was thinking of some different ways to do it. And that was why we requested. And it's my quick review, you know, discussion. You know, how do we want to, how do we want to provide what allocation? I thought there was three key areas that I thought were important. One was property value, how much property value serves. Your fire issues. One of the focuses to make sure. Good. Do is decide your budget and raise the obligations. I think that's what, you know, for you, Tom. Ask me what, what are the metrics of the. We need, I think what you do is look at this data. And what's most reported in this data. Funds to mistake or no way to roll this day. I guess we look to. Ask questions of you, what do you think so? I just mentioned, I told. Property values serve. Overparted. For budgets and populations. Quick matter. This is an acronym saying, could you get a metric of 33, 32, 33, multiply that. Total of all of this, go over the number that. Allocate the total fire. We use that. This is historical, really isn't a rationale. My, I mean.
It's just this year, 80s and 90s.
Yes. No, that's right, so you're right, the fiscal 80, 81, 82, this was the formula it was based on. And the state owned properties got this amount, the percentage that we put in there. It was really the council at most times just produced the number. I don't have any rationale that explains what, why it was wanted. We went back. But the number is 20,000. Just say. Next year. Well, there is, because there hasn't been any percentage. We're developing a percentage now, the passes. There was discussion, there were letters back and forth with town manager, finance directors, and it was saying.
And no, there was.
There was, it was never quite exactly followed, however.
It was sort of like what they figured out with this thing.
Yeah, I'll just tell you that later, what they. That, but then it got locked in place. Some years ago, for at least 10 years, the number just stayed flat. So this upcoming year, where I'm trying to get it boosted up.
We locked the number in 1992. They came up with the number 121,000 dollars. The town should have the pilot money. They received. And that's what they said. Pilot company. The fire district. Then in 2002, they said, wait a minute, there's also a town owned properties. So they took that 121,000 and they put another number next with 25. For town owned properties. Then they figured the percentage of state owned properties. They broke that 121 up. And the 125, they did the same. Originally, it started back in 1980. Mystic president went to the town manager, the mayor, the council. Brought this up and they broke it down. But as the increases happened, they could be more money to the town. They, they didn't keep it at. He where it went 43, 43. They got a big jump, I believe, 3. And it was only 37%. Wasn't 20%. Well, that's where it happened and they got locked it down 1.1. 1.1 still since.
It's what we're trying to do is call the rationale. Use the numbers and metrics. Be a fair.
So you have a formula, we plug it, now this is the money we get. Here's the percentage that goes to the fire district. Then how does it get to fight it up between?
And it would be adopted as policy, so right off the bat, I would plug that over into the draft.
Okay, so, but right now. There's money. Pilot money. Certain portion is earmarked for. Fire districts. And then how do they figure out what each fire district? Because if you're looking at two, if I'm understanding, you're looking at two things. Let's figure out a percentage of the pilot.
How we think one.
The town has looted revenue, fire districts. Let's figure out that percentage. And then how does each individual fire district get? That piece of that, right? So how do they, how does that, it did enough now? But the piece of the pie, how does it get each fire?
It's just been locked in place for hours. It's no longer, it's not anything.
When the council request comes to council, council. There's not rationale, these councils.
It's, it's based on percentage.
Originally.
So like, Quantic Bridge has 70% of the state properties. In the town of Brown. Well, you will get 70% of the money. And then the ground has probably the highest. That's what I come to numbers again, you got that percentage.
But that's not written, that's not a policy.
No, it's not, that's.
That's what's original.
That's original, yeah. So they basically took this chunk of money and said, you could get that percentage of it. Which is based on. But the problem is like for us. The state properties, since all this is played out, is on through the roof. And yet, that has never been. Bounced back out. Like 2004, there's a huge chunk of state property. They didn't put on to the state, which could never quite get to this 1.0. So that, so that percentage keeps. From.
But I guess what we would like your feedback on. What do you think? Where you, where you're reporting things. Not just particular to your district. What would make sense? You're the experts out here. Yes.
Well, I think, and I'm the Ole Miss acquired district, I'll talk district, that's what we're talking. I mean, we've been advocating for at least 15 years. This, I mean, just looking at the figures in front of us tonight. The fire district has taken the biggest hit here to Quantic Bridge. I mean, we felt as an Ole Miss district, at least 15 years. They're kind of the ones that have been getting the short end of the stick on.
Do you want, what do you refer, what do you?
Um, state revenue loss. Um, Quantic Bridge is 1,023,200 dollars. I mean, that's more than everybody else had it together. But what they're losing out on, non-taxy. Or just state, that is a total. So I mean, we've always said forever that, you know, the fire district is really taking the run of it. Is Quantic Bridge. Like we got, he's been taking it to the races.
Can you take the state land in each district? And just percentage it out? Say. Well, I mean, if Quantic Bridge has 20%, Ole Miss, they can, whatever percentage you get to 100%. Would bring you. The vision, just, you know, you just have to try it, let's see what it all look like. If you got 100% of the land and you broke it up per district and add them percentages. Then you could say we got. A million, whatever the number is, pilot money. We're talking state pilot money here. And we're going to disperse that this way and see what it looks like. Just to start, just on, you know, what's. With us. Looking at airport. Yeah, but I mean, if you want to start to find a formula. And then you can adjust from there on, you know, population. But to start the formula, maybe you ought to just take the district, the state land in each district. And we have that again, I think.
Um, there's 3.93 square miles of state. 2.86 is in the larger fire district. 72.
Was the branch one? What was the branch?
3.93 square miles. 32, 277% of Quantic Bridge. 13% of Brown. The Brown, 4.33%. I'm on point 0, 0, mystic, 1.8%. Point 0, Ole Miss, 4.83%.
That's state, that's state property own.
Is that 4.38?
Ole Miss.
Ole Miss, 4.8.
You said that to us previously.
Yeah.
Well, let's start further on that, because that, that seems reasonable to use like that. Would it be fair if only you said?
Right, but I mean, if you start with that.
Yeah. Or do we have, is there, is there a base number that all could receive to start? And then you break off. So in general.
Well, I think this is the good part, is how much the state revenue is piloting, so. Makes sense that it was start with state revenue loss. Then, yeah, yeah, I think it is. I have to write the idea of the side is that paranoid. Framing around its owner, we have to go further than that. One thing that didn't get mentioned earlier too, the state dollars are distributed, every district first gets 1,000 of that to make sure that everybody at least. So that, that's taken off the top of that, it's divided, the past originally.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, there were based on. A little bit to start.
Right.
Each district would give them a thousand dollars. Late for the markets. Whatever you.
Alright, so that's a good.
On the air. Do we think there should be a higher minimum, so these smaller departments get a little more?
Maybe she's.
Well, right now, everybody needs 1,000 originally. But now looking at how much traction losing in state revenue, just kind of seeing where they're at. Do we think that 1,000 should be up to a minimum of whatever, it's 2,000, 5,000.
I'm saying on years.
Oh.
This year.
Oh, this year. Again, I have a screen on there too. And then we went 190 some thousand for next year. That's what. So, uh, right, here's the column for 20, for the creator to go all again, the second.
Yeah, I was going to say, we like.
18183.
Yep, but that's right, those, those numbers.
Right.
Yes, once they figure this state, then they just match the town money with it. Like I had the budget from 1, 600 or something. Not last year, but in the past.
154.
154 and a half was the town now.
You knew it was a little bit, it was a little bit more for the state.
You're saying this number.
Oh, it was that 125. The, the one thing about the, the, the percentages, the center of Brown is at 17%. 0.67 square miles. And city Brown, the 4.3 with 0.17. Goes back to. Earlier is. I'm assuming that probably every point, value of every point. Versus the vacant woods. Value. That's needed, but that would do. Alright.
Oh, just a question, what's, is there any rationale for, you know, no way can Ole Miss take 20? About 1.2. And around now.
Well, if you recall, my original rate, I initially upped my prepared by 100,000. And then gave an equal percentage of that, then also the other departments. Then the council made a slight. 3,000, yeah, 33,000, 31,000. That went to Quantic Bridge.
I wouldn't speak for the council myself. And the issue being is, or at least remain, when you look at mill rates of the fire districts and you look at. As you look at Quantic Bridge neighborhood. Value of their homes are as. High as some of the other neighborhoods. You're taxing them so much.
And they're. Because of the, because of all the attached properties.
Right, because of all the attached properties, so they're, they're taking a big hit. You know what I mean? I mean, it's wonderful if you have. Right here on this one with the yellow. It has a list of all the mill rates. And, you know, like one for two is very, I mean, very expensive home, it's starting to be very low. And. And I use the same kind of way and mystic. And when you look at Quantic Bridge and they're at 4.95. Putting such a burden on people. That. Probably can't afford. So that's, that's an issue for me, so. That's one of the reasons why I. I'm for a small corner, because I might play there's a disparity here.
Some of the issue is that we have the most paid firemen too. Which brings the price up, but we're very busy district. And almost every other district is going projects, you know what I mean? Very annoying, doing a little law enforcement. That's because. And I go probably to Quantic Bridge. Which creates more faults, the department and. Because we're, you know, union week, we are kind of stuck in a position where we need 20 guys of our minimum man. So that also drives the budget up and retirement. You know, so that's one reason our budget is high too. And then we can't tax on that profit. To your point. On sort. Or.
Right way to say it, but. If you look at Mystic with 3.43 square miles in the county of Brown. And there's 21 after VAA is 784,6374. That does three and a half square miles. Mine at 12.16 square miles is 911 million. Only, we're only 60 million more. We're more than. Doing apples, three times this.
But Mystic, girl.
Mystic.
Mystic. Square miles.
That's got to be both sides.
That's both sides of the road, both sides of the road. Numbers that I took down for you was just the rotten side. I put, I put a little note on the bottom. We've only got 4.6 square miles at Brown, but we've got 21, 24 square miles.
And Mystic by the Cross G I S is 3.43 square miles. As I'm saying is that their, their. Uh, grand list is 784. Our grand list at close per miles is 911 million. That just shows you how much more valuable a home is in Mystic. Is Quantic Bridge. They add that, we can only tax. Um, 45% of our district, because of all the. Yeah, the lower value homes. And even harder.
Uh.
You all know, I showed up at meetings, you know.
Oh. I, I did do that and for us, you could perhaps pick up, you would have looked. That's 600 annual for residents.
Yeah.
Well, the way Noye does their trash pickup is you need. Get a contract for everybody. And then it's not part of your taxes that pay for it, it's a separate bill for the trash. So you pay your portion in addition to your tax. But the problem with that is. So I, I just want to clear that. Something does not improve your trash.
Okay.
It also does not improve your water. So those are all separate issues.
Water is.
By hydrants. Water as in we pay every resident, knowing water requirements and a bill every year.
Oh, you have this.
We have our own watering.
The mill rates on this spreadsheet we got in front of us. Those are the 2021, 22 mill rates?
I believe so.
Okay, yeah, because we, we dropped our street funds over the years. I thought, I looked at it, I'm like, yeah, he, he's not the ones that are going to affect the.
I think we're.
What? I'm not the financial person for, you know, I'm the fire chief. We're getting the financial stuff, so, you know, I I I get a little leery of. In essence, bargaining in a way or bringing in more or whatever, however it falls, you know, financially. One, two, I'm not sure why we're into no rates, everybody's no rate hits with different things. I mean, our no rate is three point six seven, but we own a utility company that supplements and brings that no rate down quite a bit. It would be a lot higher than that if we did not have the lease that, you know, supplements income. So it's hard to start to get into, I think, the mill rates and how much people pay. How much land you have, how much state property, I don't know if it gives money. For schools or, you know, that are not taxable purchases, things of that nature also. You know, that I understand, that percentage. Starting to trying to get into what mill rates are and, you know, everybody has their own budgets. Districts make decisions like we have eight people, we're we're all paid for planning. But some departments choose not to, that's what they choose, um, you know. To start trying to get into those weeds, I think.
No, I think the only thing all there for the middle rate is really just how much are we losing out of state revenue, that's really.
Right, and certainly there are, you know, different districts have different amounts of property that is, you know, non taxable that they're trying to. That part I understand, to start to get into, you know, no rates and, you know, I I think that's.
But it just, it just affects the mill. Not taxable, affects the middle rate.
If Sonic Bridge, Sonic Bridge didn't have all that non taxable, that'd already brought the rest.
That would be. That'd be most, we've been running numbers so much, it's that drops. I get what you're saying about the break, it's the only way to. To explain how hard it hit their pay. Right, honestly, not taxable.
And what we're trying to do here is we're trying to set a formula, because these, all the old money was just handed out. Well, that's last, was the way we did it last year. And so we're trying to add something right in the way the money is distributed to each district. And some kind of formula, and in in five years they can review it if for some reason somebody gets. Ten more or five more acres of state property or something, may have to be reviewed, you know what I mean, as things move, but right now there is no formula. They're just giving you what the same formula they had for the last ten years. And I I guess me and Tim, uh, we got a little edge because we went to the last couple of meetings and, I, you know, we've been hollering about this for a long time, so. And financially, you could have my boy come down with me and fight about this every day.
But I also hear from. Griffin here.
Oh, yeah.
As well, I mean, I hear it.
Oh.
So.
And and the guy, you're right, the guy was the big thing, that they were paying all that mill rate and we don't even get credit. But that's something the town might book in.
All right, so we have, we discussed one item that seems to be. State, we've got the state property percentages. But I think, what are the others thoughts? We can't just take the one, whatever that is, and take that application, so what other matter should be. Big base or all or we.
The missile number.
Yeah.
Have you run the numbers?
I don't know.
If you took, just to use notes, twenty percent of the pilot money because, right, it's town fire districts. And then that, whatever that number is, broken up into. How much non taxable, uh, property each district had and found the percentage. And then got a number, do we have those numbers, what would those numbers look like?
We don't have those numbers yet, I mean, we haven't discussed it. Maybe, I think that was kind of the thought we're thinking, is what's that, my 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 thought. That we start with some base number, that base number calculating, how that base number pretty much partnership, every measures. Property value, a budget of population, and then each our district starts with a base, and then the the remaining amount that's potential would be then based. Our. That's.
But the one thing. I guess can't be choosers, but all game, I will ask for the world on it. Um, I know that the state says that they're going to give you X amount of dollars, and a lot of times they'll actually give you more. If we're doing a fifty percent fact, if they do give more, we get that.
I'm very near, once the budget's set, it's already allocated to pay for other thing.
We, yeah.
It doesn't have a very.
Are you talking? Are you talking for next year, like if they gave one million this year and they gave two next year?
Well, that would be there, but I also.
There has a. Yeah, like last year, they all municipalities got. The year, actually, this budget has more. The state budget is finally.
Well, it comes in after the budget says, so that's possible, it all says what you want to make a.
I mean, right.
You could re, you could reappropriate those. For fire. That that's up to the county.
Yeah, could have. Yeah, well, the reason I'm asking that is if that money goes down, if you get me down and make the bottom, goes down, we're going to.
So if you took, if we got less, we wouldn't go back. I mean, we would still get your money out.
But we don't get fifty percent of what less.
Now, if it was in the budget to get fifty, if we were told the governor's numbers, that's what we use. And we don't give fifty percent to you, we pay the fifty percent regardless of what we end up getting. Right, we don't waste the money, because if so, if it came in less, you would not. The other. Pay back.
General.
So some, yes, it all depends on what it does.
But that's something the council would probably consider.
Any extra money that comes into our budgets, those, but it's not like a lot of guys have this much. They're being comforted here of all seven.
And we have to put it in. You can't do it any other. Has to be during budgets.
For that expenditure? Um.
Can't take out of the budget.
Well, if. If more money came in, it wasn't budgeted, it's just revenue. However, it's allocated each block to go, even if we had a policy there, it's a lot of. Outside of the budget cycle. Right, that, so if we wanted to give, you know, we got five hundred thousand extra, we wanted to be enough, you might already have a policy.
Well, I'm saying, let's just say, let's say we're going to get a million. And then it comes in, and let's just say it's at eight hundred thousand. Can't we just have a certain date that every time, every part of the year, we just do it then instead of during the budget?
Well, we have to set it to something, though, because something has to improve, anything that differs, you have to then understand.
We have to get approval on the budget and even.
Right, no matter what, you have to have a. Probably zero, because we use some of that. But we have to know what we're going to have, because we use, like, if we have, we said a million, we're, you know, we're using our machinery this year or.
Well, I think once you do a formula established. And then if you have, if there is a way to give more out, please, we have to set a formula. You know, if we're going to get, the fire district is going to get half of the state money. And then you got another million dollars there. Did we get half of that, you know, we'll get a formula going, or maybe we should only get thirty percent of additional money. But we want to write a whole ordinance, so that it's clear, you're not playing guessing games, ever, in the council.
No, in terms of mid-year, and and no matter what the council does, the policy, our team will still do what they want, the whole thing is still.
Right, so from what I'm understanding here, it's eight property, and like the amount of it, value or the.
Well, I think, well, I I was mentioning two different things, the first thing is. Do a calculation, let's just say the basis. Twenty percent, let's just say it's a million that. Do a basis, let's say twenty percent, two hundred thousand dollars. Distributed to all the fire districts based on that. That formula, like I thought, would be based on property value, budget, populations. Let's just say you do that, you get three thousand, you get twelve thousand, whatever it is, it's all going to add up to two. Then now, so phase one is that piece, phase two would be the remaining eight hundred thousand would be based upon this. I'm just using these numbers. That would be formula work, and it's just based on information.
You put it together, so I.
Yeah, I'll do it myself.
That would help.
But that doesn't make sense, I mean, you can get those numbers, the two hundred, the million number or something.
So then the the main question would be, what percentage of the town? Got, like the state money that the town got, would we.
They just.
Divide between the town and and the.
That's the big question.
That's the big, that's the big first question.
Just, you know, if you basically went to fifty percent of the issue of numbers, it's about double over. So the.
Because right now, we're currently. More on there, right? Run up to fifty, because we have a little discussion, like, who takes care of bluff point, let's just say as an example. There's an issue, it's usually like the fire department, and it's police, right? And then, you know, what other state property, like.
Airport. I, we're just fire others, they have their own, these boys.
If state was taken.
The police would probably come anyway.
They do, they they have a duty that.
Right. So I'm the most part, I'd go to fifty fifty, because I'm like. Unless somebody's looking at something here that I'm missing.
And then plus the hundred point five thousand that we've been getting. And when I said about double, that was taking out first hundred point five thousand, but then any of that, so. We, yeah.
The the numbers.
Even fifty percent of the state revenue sharing, and then additional town revenue sharing within those hundred point five thousand.
Right, yeah, I'm just talking about the state alone.
Yeah. You're ten percent. Right, current, the current numbers you're using are roughly ten percent. I mean, that's coming in, you're only giving us.
It's higher for twenty four.
Yeah, yeah.
Something in the state, fifty fifty. Well, it takes care of state property.
Yeah, I I I mean, we don't have, you don't have a public works going here. Do anything. Get the ambulance, medical.
They charge.
Get charged with that.
Here about twenty percent for next year, by the way, taking out that.
Yeah.
About twenty percent of the fire departments.
So from my perspective, increasing that to a fifty fifty, air. It's a huge cost, well.
So, hundred fifty thousand is the total, but it, like I said, if you keep giving them the hundred twenty thousand, it's about another four hundred and. Somewhere in that ballpark, just. Little rest and happen, right? Or. Little fluctuate every year.
What it actually does is it spreads the load to the whole town, rather than the fire districts. For saying, because our no rate would certainly come down, and the town budget is still going to have to have money, so the tax rate in the whole town might go up a little bit.
It gets spread out more.
Quite a bit spread out, so the districts that have the most, uh, non taxable property are going to get more, and all of the districts.
Nothing the council can consider is getting to fifty percent but doing it over your period or, you know, to face it in.
It's starting. So then, I think the other thing you can look at in is. In regard to the value. Like every point, it's going to have a lot more value than. Um, Buffalo, probably, it's because you're protecting all the buildings, I mean, right, Buffalo, we could have. Fire as well, but, and like when you get into the town, you got to stay well. You got a abandoned school in one fire district that the town owns and nothing else. And, yeah, I'm a little. By, by bridge, but who will protect the high school, will protect the junior high, protect the town hall, protect the library, protect the senior center. But we have all, and these are town properties, these are very important pieces of property and response you got to. So as we go along, we figure some of that in. I don't know what's right and wrong, but you got to, you know, and that'll probably when we get to the town more than the state. So, you know what I mean?
The state have like.
But what I'm saying is that you've got a school that's abandoned, and a school like the high school. You know, that's a lot more burden on the fire department in that district. They don't need it. Yeah, and that would be the town, but some of the state, when you look at the same way, as well, I'm saying, I don't. We'd have to get a map, lay it all out.
How it affects how. This, I think, all the town. But now, our district. On the biggest burden of. Seventy two, kind of a heart. Not fair to that line. Right, that's.
Back to you, I'm trying to think, what what metrics can we use to identify? But I was trying to use property value, budget, issue, for any metrics that you could identify. More important, properties.
For the state, maybe not, uh, because.
It's a mess cemetery.
Probably. But, you know, I did this, I did this all fifteen years ago, and I left out the churches, the cemeteries when I did this. Trying to figure it all out, and I can show town property and state property when I was doing it.
Airport would be high level.
I think, I think the person. But he's not personal, I believe are the plan in a building. I, and when I did this last time, it doesn't have a personal property. Off inside of, so, like, we have the state high school. These have both that trade building with all those fields, but it doesn't have all the tools inside of the school. If you're pointing, it's got like a big pool in the building, but there's the biology stuff, and I'm sure that that's a personal property. And I would say if you're coming up with this, if you can build a guy. At least that's a start. Fair footed in property, you, like I said, even though one of Rod has, um. Seven equals five, it's four. I don't want to talk about it, or therefore, but the value of that four, it has to be every point, where there are only four, it's not.
This one compared to.
And that was. It determines the year, seven versus four, you know.
Usually you come to, so that's, I was my first time. And then I need to.
No, property value, sorry. If you include everything, property value.
But yeah, what is I. Count the problem.
But that's usually a small piece, I think, right, add that to, but I didn't think property. And it's really what you're serving, try to take.
These are. The same with the town.
This, I'm taking a lot of, the pilot money. You stay much.
I mean.
The town.
There's no town. Okay, that's.
Okay, that's the money. But just to use numbers, so the state pilot is. 20% comes through and. Met, could the town takes that other money and gives 100?
Yes, the town gets 1.5.
Right. 1.7 this year, 1.5 this year, yeah, 1.5.
1.5 contributes 1.25.
No, 1.25 isn't a commodity of the one, out of state, that's just our, that's taxes, just our general taxes, yeah.
Well, we're semantics, but it does. If 4 and a half million comes in, we get 20%. That means we get 300,000. And then you give another 125,000 from revenue, which is taxes, but it's also, it's also 1.2 million dollars education state as part of the revenue.
It all goes into the same budget.
Right, you put it in the same budget, right? So the, right, 125,000 pilot, that actually.
For town.
Right, for town buildings, right.
Town, not.
I'm going to get 121. It's a good intro. I'm not, yeah, I'm not the fire person. And, and there are things I don't know. 1 and a half million dollar pilot money from the state comes down. And I guess to your point earlier, that's why I was looking to raise that percentage. What services the town offers, police, what other service?
State property.
Yeah, right, with the state property, the biggest thing is also.
They're, they're seeing what it's beyond. They, they, there's, there's property that they should be able to try taxes on it. Regardless if they can provide a service or not, they're still paying immediately. That's the biggest thing, but the town's taking a cat on state property.
Wait there.
Four, well, state, well, the 4 million, 800. There's money that they can't bring in regardless if they, or they're, don't know they're. We're taking the million dollar head. The only difference is that I have to provide the fire. But both are still losing money. But that's the biggest thing, is that, is that loss.
The pilot formula is the biggest, I can sell here.
Right.
A 50, 50 split means the town still is, is out a lot of money because they're still taking a lion's share of it. And then we split up the other part.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Take your 50% and figure out how to.
Are we talking 50% of money you're paying taxes or 50% increase of what's there? So according to this, next year, 1.5, right?
Yeah.
So currently, you're only providing 10% of that to us?
Let's go to 20%.
20% next year. But as it went to 50, 50, you're talking to 150,000.
Right, yeah. But that's what we're discussing, also get, we're going to provide accounts.
I, that would definitely benefit all the fire district. Because the one thing I wanted to point out is there is a fire district here that doesn't rely on everybody else. So I understand Quine Bridge has 70% of state profits. I understand that. If there's a, a fire there, they are not acting on their own. All the districts are going to be providing. Same as if I had a fire at, annoying. I can't do my job without everybody in the state. So I think coming up with something that benefits all of our, and the 50% would definitely. Um, I do support Quine Bridge, 70% is crazy. They definitely deserve the lion's share of any money that we can get.
Are all going to benefit qualified, absolutely.
Thank you, Chris. We have to, we need to, I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. Yes, we have another meeting.